Okay, we'll go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. If you could all rise and join me in the flag, Sue, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item.
I'll call the roll. Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
Present. And it is National Technology Recognition Day or something.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Is he on?
You're on mute, Mayor.
Okay, there we go.
There he is.
All right, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is a video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestream at CitrusHeights.net. And tonight's meeting replays on Monday, May 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Okay, moved by Dr. Karpinski Costa.
My second.
Second, second by the mayor. Any questions, comments? No, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah. Councilmember Karpinski Costa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Aye.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. And at this time, I do not have any speaker sheets.
Okay, I'm gonna go to City Manager Ash Feeney for a statement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Daniels. Good evening, council. Ashley Feeney, our city manager, I just wanted to make a statement. There's been quite a bit of discussion out in the media about the status of the Navigator Program, not only here in Citrus Heights but countywide. And I just wanted to reassure the public that the Navigator Program is a critical program for the city of Citrus Heights. We're actively working with our partners at the county as well as third-party service providers to ensure that that program continues. So I think we'll have some announcements on that in the coming weeks, but I just want the public to rest assured that we are working diligently to continue that program.
All right, thank you, sir. I have no signup sheets for public comment. Do we take it any other way still? Do we take it over?
No, just in person tonight.
Okay, all right. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four. Proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 12th, 2023 as Provider Appreciation Day.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Sharna Brox, I hope I said that right, from President and CEO of the YMCA of Superior, California, and Tara Taylor, founding and executive director of Single Mom Strong, to the podium to accept the proclamation. Yes.
It appears we only have.
So there's two, but only one of them's here right now. It's the same proclamation.
Okay. I'm happy to do this. Organized.
Whenever you're ready.
I'm just reading the directions. There's the directions. Read this. Proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 12th as Provider Appreciation Day. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas childcare provides a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of childrens nationwide and is a vital force in our economy, and whereas the city of Citrus Heights recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and as such has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare, and whereas the city of Citrus Heights has provided community support grants to Campus Life Connection, who has successfully been operating the Sayonara Center located at 7836 Sayonara Drive since 2012, and whereas the center provides after-school programs and tutoring to increase academic performance and school attendance, social and personal skills, healthy snacks, and involvement in sports, and whereas the city of Citrus Heights has also provided community support funding to Single Mom Strong to expand the Empowerment Preschool and Childcare Center, and whereas Empower Me, is that, am I saying that right? Empowering Me Preschool and Childcare offers affordable quality childcare to Citrus Heights and Sacramento region families, and whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim May 12th, 2023 as Provider Appreciation Day and urges all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work.
Do we wanna all?
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm gonna have you go down and take a little picture and all that fun stuff, and then we'll have you say a few words, okay?
That's why you have the evidence in your hand.
They're the same.
She won! Thank you so much. We gonna do photos? Yes. We gonna do photos first?
Just you. Go ahead, yeah, just you.
Just me?
Just you. You got it.
You're the photo winner.
Oh, I'm the timer.
I'm winning, are you?
Do you know that today is also National Child Mental Health Week?
Very good to know.
All right. Can I have you guys say a few words?
I would love to. Thank you. Wise words said in that proclamation. Anytime we can call attention to the lack of affordable quality early childhood education and put our heads together to work toward better solutions in that environment, I think it's important. I'm really, really grateful for the support of the city of Citrus Heights, for the support of the city of Citrus Heights consistently over several years. It's because of your support that our programs have grown so much. In this last year, we added infant and toddler care to our programming, and we're really proud of what we've created. I know that there's still a long way to go. So many providers closed as a result of the pandemic, so I would encourage you to really listen to the providers in your city and continue to support our efforts. So thank you again for this recognition.
Thank you. Sharna?
Thank you so much for showing that you support childcare professionals. You believe in the importance of the work they do by giving us this proclamation. We really appreciate it. On behalf of the Sacramento County Coalition of Childcare Providers and the YMCA, we thank you so much for your support and for your appreciation of all that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or anything?
I have one. To support Single Mom Strong, buy your fireworks in front of Sprouts this year. Single Mom Strong and Area 10 are partners, so it helps. And also, you know, the Sayonara Center, when Natalie and I deliver food, one of our clients that we deliver food to is a magician. So we lined him up to do a performance next Monday at the Sayonara Center for the kids. So if anybody wants to come and see some magic, he does table magic, so it's easy to stand around the table and see the magic he does, but he's gonna be there at 4:30. So at Sayonara Center. So we appreciate what the work is that you do with the children.
Thank you. And yeah, thank you for what you do. You hit a really critical area, critical need for our city, you know, our county, our state, our nation. I mean, it's really God's work that you do. Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item is presentation number five. Proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 14th through 20th, 2023 as National Police Week.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up Lieutenant Ken Lewis to the podium to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Citrus Heights Police Department. Hello, sir. I'm gonna read this to you and then come down and we'll take a picture and have you say a few words.
Okay.
Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives of property and our citizens. And whereas policing in the United States is a noble profession of tremendous responsibilities, perilous challenges, and great importance to American society. The actions of any one police professional in any instance can save lives and influence individuals in impactful ways. And whereas it is important that our citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and the necessity for working together with them in maintaining law and order, and whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people. And now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 14th, 2023 through May 20th, 2023 as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2023 to be National Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all peace officers who through their courageous deeds have served the community across this country.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Ken Lewis. I'm a lieutenant with your police department. For generations, courageous men and women in our nation, law enforcement community have dedicated their lives to protecting us in big cities, small towns, suburban neighborhoods across America. Each morning, police officers pin on their badge and walk out the door to go to work, hoping they'll come home that day. Sadly, in 2022, 245 law enforcement officers paid the ultimate sacrifice, 12 of which were in the state of California. On Peace Officer Memorial Day and during Police Week, we express our gratitude for these selfless public servants who put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe and honor those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. This year's memorials taking place locally, at the state level, and in Washington, D.C. will be especially somber as Elk Grove Police Officer and former Citrus Heights Police Officer Tyler Lenahan will be honored for paying the ultimate sacrifice on January 21st, 2022. Several staff members from our department attended the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial on May 4th as well as the State Law Enforcement Memorial on May 8th to pay respects and honor those they gave their all to protect our communities. On behalf of Chief Alex Turcock and the men and women of the Citrus Heights Police Department, I want to thank the council for recognizing National Police Officer Memorial Week and your continued support for your police department.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lewis. Any words from the council? I'll just say, thank you. Thank you from deep in my heart. 245. 245. 245 people that don't get to go home, that don't get to go home to their wife or their husband, to their kids. And we see what American media too much focuses on. And if you didn't hear that number here tonight, you probably would never know, 245. It's just amazing. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number six. The proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 21st through 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week.
Okay, I'd like to invite up the incredible Regina Cave, General Services Director extraordinaire to the podium to accept this proclamation on behalf of the American Public Works Association. Gonna read this and then come down, we'll take a picture and have you say a few words. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Citrus Heights. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and most importantly, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and youth of Citrus Heights to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, and whereas the American Public Works Association has selected Connecting the World Through Public Works as the theme for National Public Works Week 2023, which symbolizes how public works connects us all, whether through infrastructure or first responder services, and how public works professionals enhance the lives of the communities they serve. And now therefore be resolved that the city of Citrus Heights does hereby designate the week May 21st through 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, sir.
See what you're missing, Tim?
What's that?
Did you see what you're missing?
I see what I'm missing. I do. Congratulations, Regina. You and your team.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It is my pleasure on behalf of the Sacramento chapter of the American Public Works Association as well as your Citrus Heights General Services Department to accept this proclamation and recognizing National Public Works Week. Citrus Heights public work staff, your general services staff are hard at work on a constant basis, ensuring safe streets, connections with all of our community through our sidewalks, our trails, and ensuring a bikeable community. And so we just really thank you for recognizing all the work that we do. I appreciate it.
And also time to pump your public work showcase.
I was going to, however, our city manager will be doing that.
Pump it up.
We do have our public work showcase next Thursday, May 18th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. over here at Van Marren Park. We're bringing it back as we had last year, but even bigger. We will have a lot of great opportunities for kids and adults alike to come out and meet with public works employees, not only from here, but from consultants and from other agencies such as SMUD, the Sewer District, Citrus Heights Water District, to really understand what public works does, look at the career opportunities within public works, and take a look at a lot of the cool equipment we're gonna have out there as well.
Do you go to high schools and kind of talk to career kids and so that they know these jobs are out there? And I don't think that when I was in school, we ever knew these kind of jobs were available and so that you could say, geez, when I grow up, I don't really wanna work down at that sewer district.
Exactly. Now, that's kind of part of that career technical education I think we've been talking about, and I've spoken with the mayor about as well. We have been in communication with the schools here. We have delivered flyers, so all the students received flyers in their backpacks within the last month, so they were able to take the information home to their parents and hopefully bring their parents along with them to come and talk to staff and.
We could offer like a ride-along, you know, or a work-along, whatever, kind of.
Internship.
Internships, yeah.
Absolutely.
That'd be good.
Any comments? Go ahead.
So it's not sexy what you do, but I wanna make sure that we acknowledge the fact that when we had those record rains this year, that our creeks did not flood. Our streets remained clear. Couple extra potholes, as to be expected, but because of the work that you and your team did previously to prepare us for this, we were well ahead, and I deeply appreciate everything you guys do. You don't see it, but it's happening behind the scenes, and it keeps the city moving. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, any comments?
No, I made my comments, but I'm just so proud of our team, Public Works, that General Services have worked so hard. And to just echo what Councilwoman Milton said, the preparation is everything. And that really showed through this last storm. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say thank you, too. You know, everybody thinks it all happens so easy, you know, and the thing that's so amazing about what you do and your team does is that there's so many external factors that affect you, and whether it be funding, whether it be materials, whether it be this, whether it be that, so much of what you don't have direct control over impacts what you're trying to do to make everything look nice and smooth here in Citrus Heights. And I wish people understood and appreciated a little bit more where we are today in 2023 as opposed to where we were before 1996. And it's night and day. It's really night and day, and it's just gonna keep getting better because we get our property taxes and more money, and so we'll be spending more and more on doing what's best for the city. And we really greatly appreciate you and your team for steering it in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item, please, yes.
Next item is presentation number seven. A proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 2023 is Building Safety Month.
Okay, I would like to invite up the smooth and always calm Casey Kempner. Did I say it right, Casey? Close. Kempner. I'm sorry, Kempner. Community Development Director to the podium to say a few words, and Joseph Cuff. Did I say that right? Yes. She building official to accept the proclamation. I'm gonna go ahead and read this, and then we'll come down and do the picture thing and have you guys say a few words. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild light flyers, wild land fires, floods, and earthquakes, which, did you feel the one today? It happened.
Was it one today?
We had an earthquake today. Yep. Whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, resilience, why you have to throw it at me twice, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Citrus Heights do hereby claim the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council. It's a pleasure to introduce you to Joe Cuff tonight. He joins us. He's been here about a month now. He's our new building official, so more appropriate time than Building Safety Month introducing him to the council to accept this proclamation. Joe has a wealth of experience. He's worked in Sacramento County, ran Cardova in the private sector, and we're pleased to have him on our team.
Welcome.
Now dance.
Any words from the council?
I'll say a couple.
Go ahead.
Hey, Casey. Hi, new guy. So glad you're here. But, you know, you guys do do some tremendous work, and you know I'm a big housing advocate, so when we came out with our pre-done accessory dwelling unit plans, that was a huge thing for Citrus Heights, and you're always on the cusp, always forward-thinking about how do we streamline the process from our online one-stop permitted shop to working with individuals who wanna come and build in Citrus Heights. You always go above and beyond, and as a council, we deeply appreciate all those efforts. Thank you so much.
Definitely. Mr. Mayor, anything?
No comment, thank you. But I'm very appreciative. Just the comments this council's made already is very good.
Yeah, again, thank you. It's work that goes unnoticed until an earthquake hits. And you've seen it around the world, where things have happened and buildings have come down when they shouldn't have come down, and, you know, that's why we have these kind of things. And so, and it goes way beyond that, way, way beyond that. But it's, again, an area that people I don't think appreciate enough and understand enough and realize that without this kind of structure to a city, to a government, we would probably see people suffering and killed in situations. And so, thank you for what you do. Thank you very much.
You still have the building safety open house? Remember, you used to have an open house, and do you still do that?
We're doing a lot of events this week, this month.
When is it?
We have a display out in the.
The microphone.
We are doing a lot of events throughout the month. So we have a public display out in the public counter area. One of our permit technicians, Susan McClendon, is doing a bunch of different activities that highlight Building Safety Month.
When is that? Because I promised her some crayons. When is it?
Oh, if you wanna bring them, bring them. Anytime. She can move her things around as much as she needs to to use them.
When is it, though?
It started last week.
Is it every day that someone can come in, lobby?
Yeah, she's doing an activity every week, and so at the end of every week, there'll be prizes and there'll be giveaways, so as soon as you can bring crayons, she'll use them.
All right, I'll get them.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board update.
All right, we'll start with Portia.
Nothing exciting going on in my world, which is really unusual for me. I'm usually really busy. So instead, I'll just say for all the moms out there, Mother's Day is coming. For all those people who have moms, Mother's Day is coming. Get good stuff. We don't want flowers, and we don't want robes, okay? We want good stuff, like chocolate or pizza, tacos. Tacos are good. But other than that, you know, have a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Just like Portia, I've had a very, very quiet couple weeks, so I have nothing to report, and happy Mother's Day to the moms in our audience and in our city.
All right.
Well, I'm glad they all yielded me their time, because I've been busy. Well, first I fell, and I crunched a couple, fractured a few toes, so if I'm limping around, that's why. Before I give my reports on my boards, I want to kind of bring up something that. I don't think they fly more than a couple hundred feet. So if you have trees and you have tree holes, you have mosquitoes, you have a dog risk. So my recommendation is to make sure your veterinarian fits you with the appropriate, you know, mosquito prevention, heartworm prevention medicine, because treatment costs very, lots and lots and lots of money, whereas prevention is relatively cheap. And so, and with the tree hole mosquito, and then it, as the season progresses, other mosquitoes take on that job, but, and then the symptoms don't show for several months, so they can get bit today and then be fall before you get diagnosed. So best to do prevention. So on that note, I did go to my sewer board meeting. The good news is there will be no sewer rate increases in this fiscal year, but look for some perhaps next year. Hopefully, they'll be small, but there hasn't been a fee raised in years and years and years and years and years. And so, and that's because of the wise administration they have. What other was interesting at this, at the sewer is if you are one of the 17,782 delinquent accounts, you have until Jul- say, July to square away your account, or it'll be turned over to the property tax roll. I, it's just hard to believe that there are 17,782, and most of them are residential, not businesses, and that it's valued over at $11 million worth of tax, worth of fees that have been unpaid to the district. So I find that incredible. Incredible. So that's the sewer. We also had STA meeting, and we're getting, you know, I don't know how we, how we report these in our budget, but we're getting $4 million from Measure A money to do Auburn Boulevard. So that's in there. We did our budget today, that's in there. Oh, the bad news is the abandoned vehicle service authority, that when, and the police would want to know this, that normally when they get an abandoned vehicle, you tow it, you do whatever you do to it, and then you submit the cost of that to this authority, and you get refunded the money. And Citrus Heights has in the past gotten a substantial, probably more than any other jurisdiction, reimbursement for those costs. That has not been renewed this year. So it might be at the late, at the end of this fiscal year quarter before it gets, there's been some disagreement on legal language when the bill was introduced. So it's in the process of being hacked by people who are smarter than all of us put together, who can't come to some understanding, and so that bill is been, is going to linger until, so we won't get any reimbursements for, for now. So we can just let them pile up, those abandoned vehicles, or we have to eat it. All right, that's there. Oh, we did get our, the four projects that we put in for was, was listed, our traffic control, wait a minute. I have a hard time seeing up far away here. These were good. This was our, we get $269,299 allocated for our five-year plan for traffic control and safety. And we have asked for, oh, this is over a five-year period. So there are four projects listed in that. That included the San Juan, which gets some of the Secog money, too, and the Old Auburn Road, and two other things we had. But anyways, those are the two big ones I broke down. I think some of just those, that. There was so much that went on, because it's just, a lot of it's, it was a long meeting, too. Oh, the bad, the other board, bad news. Where's Mary? Is she here, Mary? They're going to cut down the Smart Ride. Citrus Heights is the most expensive part of the Smart Ride, and so they are proposing to shrink the service area and eliminate certain parts of Orange Vale and Fair Oaks. So people who use Smart Ride to go to the dest- and part of Antelope, so people that use to go to those destinations will have to make other arrangements. And we, I think what I want to do is maybe sit down with, with Regina and them and go over it, because I think there's a whole bunch of people that go for dialysis to one of those spots. So, well, that just came out today. I was, my mouth was open. I was like, it's, it's, they're cutting Citrus Heights. It's almost like since Sparky died, they're going to punish us. So I don't like that. So we could set up some meeting and maybe, all right, so that was that. And what else? Oh, and they, the parent transit has a wonderful program to get people to, to farmer's markets, but not in Citrus Heights. So they, they say we don't have enough low-income people. I thought we had plenty, but they don't. All right, well, that's that. What else? Oh, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor and I judged a debating contest held by the Lions, and the gal that we, and Tom Sheeler was there, but the gal that the mayor and I moved forward, I went to her next level up, and she beat four, three other high schools, and now she's in the Northern California. So she got $4,500 for a speech on whether social media is good or bad. So anyways, that was, I did do that. That was fun. And like I said, I fell and hurt my feet. Other than that, I'm done.
All right. Just on Smart Ride, I'm pretty sure when that started, there was a predetermined end date for that program, pilot program, whatever you want to call it, for, for Citrus Heights. So I don't think we're being punished, but, but it was, I think, predetermined.
They're cutting some significant, they're cutting down the hours, too. Right now, we go to nine at night. They're going to cut it down, down to seven, 7:00 P.M.
And, and the bottom line is, the truth of it is, Smart Ride is extremely subsidized, extremely. And so.
You know, I think they could look for grants. You know, maybe they need a grant writer, because they do some good stuff. They just need to get money from more sources than Measure A.
All right. So we did this, we did this, and so I'll do mine. Couple things. It's National Technology Week, if you.
It is.
It is, if you didn't know, so just.
Today is supposed to be the day.
It is. I want to apologize for missing the last meeting. I was under the weather a little bit. I was enjoying the wonderful experience for the first time in my life of a kidney stone, and it was not fun. And so I apologize for missing that meeting. Over the last few weeks, attended the chamber lunch a couple of days ago, had a great presentation on service dogs and, and the myths and the realities around all of that, especially as they relate to businesses. Wonderful presentation by a, a gal that trains service dogs and other dogs, excuse me, other animals, too, I guess. Well, maybe they just do dogs for the one that presented, but, but just a really great presentation. Today, I attended the Sunrise P-Bid board meeting. Really good things happening over there. And for you don't know what a P-Bid is, it's the Property Business Improvement District, and it's the one square mile area approximately around Sunrise Mall or Sunrise and Greenback. Hundreds of businesses involved, and they, they do what they can to make it look nicer and keep it up. And they, they use security, they use law enforcement, and they do really good things up there, and that's a good thing. And then Cap to Cap, I haven't been back since, since we went to Cap to Cap, and I think you guys all probably expressed your, your fun times, and we had a good time. We, we did some important work. I met with the offices of Congressman Guerra Mindy, Congressman Ami Bera, and Congressman Tom McClintock for the Public Safety Team. Important work, and there was about 400 of us, and I think it's money well spent for the city. And I think National, that's that, that's that, that, and that, and I think that's it for me. Anything for you, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I, I, I have been traveling quite a lot, and I'm hoping that I'll be done traveling for the rest of the year at this point. And so I'm currently in, in Davidson, North Carolina. It's beautiful here, but very.
They have a city hall that looks just like ours.
Really? I haven't seen it. I'll have to take a look at it tomorrow before I leave town. But I, I'm shocked at how this little town of Davidson, I think the median home is about, is over $1 million.
Ooh.
It made it, you think North Carolina, you're going to find some inexpensive homes? Not here. They're all one, two, $3 million. So anyhow, that's enough about that. I did, when I went to Cap to Cap, we actually missed a meeting with Kevin Kiley, Congressman from District Three, and I had a meeting with him last Friday. It was a very productive meeting, talking about, I was on the Economic Development Team, and, and we talked about the potential economic issues that are coming through, through the Congress right now. So he seemed very, very in, in tune with, with what we're doing, even though he's not our, specifically our, our guy. He was one that, that we did meet with when we were back, back in Washington, D.C. So with that, I didn't really have any much, much in the way of other meetings. Just been really busy with my day job. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And one thing I did forget, the Regional Transit Meeting. We obtained a, I believe it was $45 million grant or something, through, to RT from the federal government, and that'll go towards 16 rail cars. So those babies are expensive, but, you know.
Rail? As in light rail?
Light rail, yes, light rail. 16. Okay, that's it. Next item, please.
The next item is Consent Calendar, items eight, nine, and 10.
Could anybody request we remove any items from the consent calendar? Here, and I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
I think Portia on the first, Jane on the second. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I just wanted to point out that the mall is, of the Sunrise Marketplace, is doing a mural development, and on our consent calendar was, we gave them, through our beautification, $20,000 to match the money that they're going to spend to put some murals, like the one that's on the side of PetSmart that says destination. It's going to be pretty, so we'll kind of wait till the light comes in. And I did notice that the little works of art that are on all the utility boxes, how cool is that? I mean, that's just, I was sitting at a light, and I looked at the utility box, and I think it was a Saison or something, you know? It was cool.
Should go back behind the mall and look at the ones back in there.
Behind the mall or behind Birdcage?
Behind the mall, the Sunrise Mall, yeah, on the east side.
Ones are going to get torn down?
Who knows? Maybe we'll integrate them. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Aye.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item is Regular Calendar, item number 11. The subject is fiscal year 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 Biannual Budget Overview and Discussion.
All right, Vice Mayor, I wanted to, in council, I wanted to take a moment here to, and Mayor, to introduce this item and just say a few kind of overview comments at the outset. Just really proud of the team that came together. This was the first budget that we collectively prepared as an executive team, and just really proud of the work that they did. We went pretty deep on the budget, and I know that that has been really a time-consuming process for all the team and the wider teams that have been involved with that. So I really wanted to express my gratitude to them. And consistent with a team approach, you're going to hear from all the different department heads tonight, so promise I will be brief here, and you'll hear from many others. But we're going to be handing the baton off throughout the presentation, so our Administrative Services Director, Susan Towar, along with Tammy Nasardi, will go ahead and kind of orchestrate the presentation tonight on behalf of the team, and then we'll hear from others. But also, with the wider team, I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize Tammy Nasardi and also Alberto Presario for their work on the budget, too, and specifically Tammy, who did, did a lot of work on this. So definitely express my gratitude, as well as all the various department heads. If we can go to the next slide. So just an overview, we'll talk about our approach to the budget, I'll, I'll cover that. And then the actual budget, the proposed budget will be presented for the two fiscal years. And then Regina Cave, our General Services Director, will give an overview of the draft capital improvement program as well. So from the approach to the budget, a budget, I think, should be viewed as a statement of your values for a community, and that's the way we really approached this budget, is keeping in mind the focus goals of the, the three-year goals of the city council, as well as our focus area work plan. We took that, it's kind of a overarching considerations. We prepared the budget, and we're mindful of that throughout. And then from a fiscal prudence standpoint, the way we approached this, we did a really hard look at the actual expenditures that had occurred over the last several years, and then we also did a look back to like 1617, which was prior to the pandemic, to just kind of see where we were then. So the budgets that were prepared really represent an actual spend that we think, you know, looking at the actuals that occurred, and then in addition to that, we're really mindful of what do we need to make advancement in some of these areas, you know, relative to the focus area work plan on infrastructure, dealing with, with blight in the city. So you'll hear specifics around those programs, and then also, how do we set our team up? We, from an operational standpoint, and you'll, you'll hear this from the team, really moved some positions around within various departments to make sure that we're well-suited to face some of these infrastructure challenges that, that we currently have. And we're also, for the first time, putting some general fund money into street repairs. And so in order to really kind of advance some of those projects, we've had to kind of retool the team a bit, but you're going to hear more about that. And so again, I think just overall, we've really kind of set that, set this budget up to, you know, be fiscally responsible, but, and also really kind of think about operationally how we're going to serve the city. Our strategic plan, three-year goals that are adopted by the city council, these run through March 2024. Maintain and enhance fiscal stability, maintain public infrastructure, and enhance alternative modes of transportation, diversify for a resilient economy, sustain and preserve public safety, enhance community vibrancy and engagement. Speaking of the focus area work plan, the lot has happened over the course of the last year and a half, I would say. This focus area work plan was adopted in May 2022, and it runs through March 2024. This really helps clarify our mission as a staff team, and it was also adopted by city council by way of resolution. And really, it was developed by going out and hearing from the community. And this focus area work plan very much informed our approach to the budget. Just to highlight it, the four focus areas, we have community image, economic development, community connection, and infrastructure. So out of those four focus areas, we have actually 48 different initiatives, and you can kind of see they're pretty well-balanced among those various areas. So the programs that were stood up is, coming out of this focus area work plan are funded and provided for in this upcoming budget as well. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Susan.
Thank you. So today, we're going to take a look at our proposed budget, and some key items that we're going to highlight and go more into detail is our general fund, and also reviewing our other city funds, so that's our special revenues that are typically expenditures that are funded by themselves, the ARPA funding requests, and our capital improvement program. With that, I'd like to hand it to Tammy. She's, as City Manager Feeny mentioned, she is essentially like our budget manager here in all things and knowledge of budgets.
So as you can see with the revenues, property tax, which is exciting, is that you're not going to see on the expenditure side that horrible word revenue neutrality anymore. We have the sales tax, which is our number one revenue. Charges for services, those are such things as our community center rentals, planning fees, vehicle towing fees, those types of things. Intergovernmental revenue is our motor vehicle license fee that we get, and the others at the 21% are fines, such as vehicle fines, red light cameras, franchise fees, would be such as solid waste. TOT are transient occupational, which is the most.
is that you're not going to see on the expenditure side that horrible word revenue neutrality anymore. We have the sales tax, which is our number one revenue. Charges for services, those are such things as our community center rentals, planning fees, vehicle towing fees, those types of things. Intergovernmental revenue is our motor vehicle license fee that we get. And the others at the twenty-one percent are fines, such as vehicle fines, red light cameras, franchise fees would be such as solid waste. TOT are transient occupational, which is the motels and the short-term rentals. License and permits would be business licenses, business permits. Other taxes are property transfer tax and utility user tax. Excellent. So then here is the general fund revenue that we are proposing for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal years. And then just a little fun fact is in regards to property tax. So for every dollar that is collected for property tax, the city receives eight point four cents.
Cents or dollars?
Cents. For one dollar, we get eight point four cents. The timing and amount of the payments are projected to be in December. Each December, we typically get fifty-five percent of all the property tax. In May, we get around forty-three percent. And then in August, we get the balance. In regards to sales tax, kind of the same thing. For every dollar that's spent, we get a penny. So we're projected to get around fourteen million, so that's a lot of pennies.
Okay, so just going over our general fund expenditures. Each of the departments are going to go through each of their segments here a little more in detail. But just reviewing this, I wanted to go over, we have our amended budget here on the far-left column, our proposed expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four, and what that change is net from this fiscal year of twenty-three. And then we have our second, or second-to-last column here, the proposed expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five, and the change of from, over from twenty-three, twenty-four. So you'll see that. But I want to take a moment and highlight in the next slide our total expenditures here. Going through, our total amended budget for twenty-two, twenty-three is about thirty-eight point three million. And we are projecting expenditures at about thirty-nine point eight million. So that's about a change of one point four million or about three point seven four million. For twenty-four, twenty-five, we are projecting about forty-two point, excuse me, forty-one point two million. And that's about one point five million change from twenty-three, twenty-four. Do want to make note, and we will highlight it also later on in our financial forecast, that typically when we are modeling this out, we are modeling out about four and a half percent inflationary factor. And through our team's approach, we were able to reduce it and have a net change of about three point seven four percent. So we're always trying to take a hard look at our budgets and our expenditures and see where we can pay attention to be more fiscally prudent. Some key changes that we're proposing to, to positions is basically, you'll see some of them on the left and that we are changing over. And this was a big team approach from all of our department heads. What we did is we got together and saw what was, what is our future upcoming operational needs. And with that, we were able to reorganize some of these positions to come up with about a half, half of an FTE increase. And that's netting about thirty thousand dollars. So each of the departments will go through and talk about the changes in their respective departments. So moving on into the Administrative Services Department. Once again, just highlighting on our department in particular, some key changes. Wanted to take your attention to Information Services. With Information Services, we have about a five hundred thousand dollar increase. And you'll notice this big increase and that's predominantly due to the fact that we took the approach to centralize our IT. And I'll be talking about that more. We also have an increase in risk management and that's predominantly due to insurance and then some non-departmental expenses. So once again, in finance, one of our big key projects is to implement our new Tyler Muniz ERP system. And that'll take about two years to turn around. In human resources, under risk management, we do have that two hundred thousand dollars increase in insurance liability. Again, information technology, we decided that it's best to centralize all of our information technology or software and communication costs into one area. So it's now centralized where we can have a better handle on it. And we are focusing on the city side. And then in the next fiscal cycle, what we'll do is we'll try to also pull in the PD side. So this increase is only on the city side, pulling in from the other departments. In non-departmental, we have our PERS unfunded actuarial liability. That has gone up about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what that is, is for the pension that we have through PERS, it's not unfunded, it's us unfunding a liability that's on hand. And then going on to professional services, there is an increase of sixty thousand dollars for an annexation consultant.
Susan, before we get too far away from this particular slide.
Yes.
That review that you just did, I just wanted to point out that we did take advantage of the, some of the ARPA money in order to cover some of these expenses. While we're seeing them on the, in the budget now, which is where they belong. Those are costs that we were able to leverage the ARPA funds to cover some of those costs. And that specifically was going to be upgrade to the IT system and some of the police vehicles that we're going to see. And those are all covered costs were covered by ARPA. Very prudent use of ARPA.
That's correct. So our Tyler Muniz implementation and a lot of our hardware upgrades, infrastructure, IT infrastructure upgrades did get approved for ARPA funding back in October of twenty twenty-two. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Director Regina Cave to present on General Services.
Good evening. So this chart here before you reflects just the general fund support to the General Services Department. General Services is largely supported through other funds such as solid waste, gas tax, stormwater, and Measure A. So for these items, for instance, purposes, a lot of the operational costs, maintaining the buildings themselves and the staffing have stayed a little bit status quo. However, looking back at the chart previously that identified the new positions and some of the changes in the positions will affect some of these areas specifically as you're looking at engineering, increasing a couple of our engineering positions to support Council's focus of additional infrastructure projects and pavement operations, as well as our fleet management. General Services will be taking over fleet from the Police Department this next fiscal year in order to free up some resources for the Police Department and one of their sergeant positions. So that's why you see the increase from a hundred and seventy-four thousand to seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. The PD budget will be absorbed into the General Services Department. And then, sorry if I can go back. And then some of the other positions, one of the positions of the Facilities and Grounds Manager, we will be splitting that into two supervisor positions to be able to address not only the facilities and fleet needs, but the community center and events needs as we continue to improve and increase our event opportunities. Next slide. So for the overview for the Community Services aspect of General Services, we'll continue with and bolster up our customer service and department support, not only for our engineering projects, but for our C Click Fix and our public interface. Continue with our refuse, organics, and recycling programs as part of our state mandates. And continue our push with RT for not only our existing services, but improving upon a lot of the bus stop amenities that we have throughout the city in conjunction with our capital projects. For our engineering, we have our payment resurfacing projects, again, as one of Council's strategic goals, and increasing our capital project planning and delivery. We have a large list of projects that I will go over later within the CIP. And support for our development projects, as we have new development and redevelopment here in the city. And then our traffic signal operations, we are waiting to receive additional funding from a congressional grant that will increase our CIP delivery and allow for about a million dollars worth of upgrades along Green Back Lane to support signal operations. And for facilities and fleet, we have our Citrus Heights Community Center. Will continue to bolster up our community center and look to see ways to help market it as a large venue here in this, in the region for events and also look to see what type of cost recovery of changes that we can make. Again, our fleet management, taking over the fleet from Police Department and incorporating that into our existing fleet operations. And then bolstering up our community events as we have our Stars and Stripes Event that will be launching this July first and looking for opportunities of additional events throughout the year. And then lastly, our operations and maintenance, as we have about six months under our belt of our beautification crew and our collaboration with our partners over at the Police Department to address blight throughout the community. We have our creeks and channels and open spaces. As Councilmember Middleton mentioned earlier, we have a lot of creeks that we maintain here in the city and we want to continue making sure that they are operating efficiently. And then our pothole repairs, as we have increased our pothole repair program by rolling out a lot, larger mill and fill operations. We actually have some starting tomorrow and throughout next week as well. And then here before you are the positions that we are converting from the Facilities and Grounds Manager. We will be converting that into two supervisor positions. We have a pre-existing budgeted Operations Manager position that will be providing for a Principal Engineer and Associate Civil Engineer. And then we converted one of our Program Assistants to a Program Technician and are also adding an additional Program Technician position to our department to support our engineering needs. And that's it. And I will hand it over to Police Chief Turkoff.
Thank you, Regina. Good evening. Before we get started, I do want to thank my wider team as well. So our lieutenants and above and our command staff who monitor each piece of this budget and ensure fiscally responsible service delivery. And then specifically, Senior Management Analyst Cassandra Canaan, who has the legacy view, much like Tammy, on the budget, where she knows where all the money has been for years and she helps us do the math on it and make sure that all the numbers line up. So thank you to that team. You'll see here our overview of the general fund expenditures for the Police Department, which is both Police and Animal Control. We also have code enforcement, though code enforcement is funded largely out of special funds through housing. So that's not noted here. We'll talk a little bit more in detail about the movements in the budget. But overall, you'll see for the next year, we're looking at a reduction of over three hundred thousand dollars. And then in the year after that, a slight increase, which has a lot to do with personnel costs and some benefit increases there as well. So if we can go to the next slide. And looking at the budget, really are applying our values to the budget here too. It's consistent with our strategic goals of hiring and retaining quality professionals, providing adequate training and equipment for public safety, and then constantly reorganizing and adjusting our resources as appropriate to continue to enhance that service delivery and quality assurance for the public. Next slide. Some of the adjustments, looking back, you know, COVID was a little weird for financial forecasting. So we went through our recent actuals, but then also pre-COVID numbers and then adjusted that for today's dollars and tried to adjust down wherever possible to more accurately reflect actual costs and trends. Some items, and Director Cave already alluded to this, but some items that moved out of our budget just to be more appropriately managed in other places was the fleet, which also includes our fuel costs that are now being managed out of General Services. And then like Director Towar discussed, communications piece for us is our cell phone management move to IT and our software will follow probably in the next budget, budget cycle. Some items that did increase are kind of without our, outside of our control. One significant one is our hazards material contract with SAC Metro Fire. That increased, increases thirteen percent next year and then has an excel, a growth of three percent after that. It's not a lot we can do there. They are the experts in that field, but it is a significant increase in the administration costs there. And then secondly, for the police-specific software, such as our computer aided dispatch and some investigative databases, software licensing fees just increase on a normal standpoint so that it's adjusted for there as well. Our personnel adjustments, with the migration of fleet to General Services, our fleet technician at the PD will, will transfer over to General Services and report to one of the new supervisors there. We created one additional dispatch position by reclassifying a current FTE. This will help maintain critical staffing for emergencies and allow some slack in the system to adjust for sick calls and other leaves that need to be utilized in there. We had a half-time, half-benefited CSO that we're upgrading to a full-time CSO. These CSOs are crucial to service delivery as they take the lower priority reports that aren't life and death emergencies, but it's a significant workload and a real asset to our, free up our patrol officers to do more proactivity and things like that. We've also found that the CSO position is a great entry-level spot for a young applicant that needs some life experience and has to wait to age up to become a police officer. Many of our successful police officers started here as CSOs and are doing a great job. And then you'll see one officer position was removed, but don't fear, that just puts us back to our normal officer FTEs because that was a additional grant-funded officer that we had for the last two years that is just, the grant funding has gone away, so that position will as well. All right. And here again is those changes. So the reclassification was a vacant code enforcement officer to dispatcher. The police officer went away because of the grant funding. And then the point five increase is the community service officer. And with that, I will hand it off to Director Kempner.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Next slide, please. So for community development, we've been pretty consistent. We are starting to see a trend of declining entitlements and new development. So reflection of what the City Manager had said, we need to save those opportunities to help support the Council's focus on blight and so forth. So we saw an ability to eliminate some positions from seat, community development to allocate them to other departments. So that's what you can see here as significant cost savings from community development by eliminating a planning manager and assistant planner position. And we're also carrying forward some of our more recent efficiencies we did in the last year, which was a consolidation of our, our Housing Grants Manager and Housing Technician Position into one position to continue that cost savings moving forward. So you can see the next slide, please. So you can see here, we're not adding any new positions, we're just eliminating those two positions. You know, at some point, if we see development pickup over this next two-year cycle, we might come and talk to the Council about a need for some more support on that, depending on how the development projects move forward, so. I'll turn it over to Director Huber.
Thanks, Casey. Economic Development and Community Engagement is a new department. And this is the summary budget slide. I want to acknowledge here at the outset that the delta that you see is essentially three things. It's getting the department set up, it's creating an operating budget to help meet the aggressive goals that we've set in our Focus Area Work Plan. And the majority of that delta is comprised of grant funds, programs that previously lived in non-departmental areas that will now be under the community umbrella, the community engagement umbrella for safekeeping and administration and hopefully pushing for full subscription rates on all those programs. So because this is a new department, I'd like to take a moment and do a flyover of subject areas so that we can connect dots back to budget intentions and strategies. In this department is Economic Development, of which most excitingly launched this week is our Business Attraction Incentive Program. So over the course of this next two-year budget cycle, we'll be marketing that aggressively to be able to create wins in that area. There is, there are also initiatives connected to our Sunrise Tomorrow Plan, a specific plan to redevelop Sunrise Mall and attract development. And under this area, we also administer a plethora of really great programs that we have for citywide business retention and expansion, including our Economic Development Support Program, which went to Council earlier this evening to help promote, to help support Sunrise Marketplace with their mural projects. Another area under this department is Communications. So coming up over the next two years, we'll be working on our Citrus Heights Cares Communications Plan for Community Pride and Beautification, also growing our Citrus Heights brand reach and engagement in general. And I want to pause here and underscore that in the budget, we've set intentions around really building our non-digital communications channels. We know that our digital channels are strong and accessible to folks who prefer to receive communications that way. But we've set a goal to increase non-digital communications to ensure inclusive engagement with as many residents as possible. We want to ask the question, who's not at our table yet and how do we get them here? And we also set, have, set intentions around growing our Connect Citrus Heights brand, which is our coalition of community groups. Next slide. Also really exciting under this umbrella is our new Community Engagement Program, which is heavily represented under the Community Connection area of our Focus Area Work Plan. Here, we'll be supporting and promoting our Citrus Heights Neighborhood Associations through effective marketing and engagement. We'll create really effective community engagement programming. We're playing right now with some concepts around grassroots microevents. We'll also be increasing our subscriptions to the Neighborhood Improvement Partnership Program, another really great community engagement program that Citrus Heights offers. And finally, we'll be administering our community projects grants and community support grants, all of which are now under this umbrella. Also, under the department umbrella is an upcoming Grant Strategy Initiative, as well as the ramp-up of Legislative and Government Affairs Platform. Next slide. So how that's represented in the budget, as I mentioned, we transferred community So how that's represented in the budget, as I mentioned, we transferred community grants that previously lived in non-departmental areas, so that includes our Community Support Grant, the NIP and Reach Grant, History and Arts Grant. We've reduced the Economic Development Support Grant slightly, but overall, we certainly have a lot to offer, given the upstart of our Business Attraction Incentive Program. We've also added marketing and promotion initiatives, including those non-digital communications channels that I referenced, including citywide mailers, branded city giveaways, which will come in really handy at our upcoming citywide events, as well as resources for Neighborhood Association and Community Engagement programming. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Feeny.
So that sounded like it takes up your Monday and some of your Tuesday, but what about the rest of the week?
Still working on the mic.
Okay.
All right, if we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, I'll go ahead and present the City Manager's Office Budget. You can see this budget covers City Council, City Manager, City Clerk when we have elections, and then also our City Attorney. You can see from year over year, the total expenditures, which we actually should say probably total budget for '22, '23 was $1.5 million. You can see we're reducing that by almost $250,000. And then the next year, we have some slight growth, primarily due to an election year. If we can go to the next slide. I'll go ahead and speak to kind of the ins and outs on some of the bigger items. For the City Council Budget, we do have a slight addition to that budget. The prior budget was put together during COVID. There really wasn't much happening by way of conferences and meetings, but I think it's very important that the community is represented by a council that has opportunities to learn about how they can best serve their community. So we did add to the conferences and meetings budget. And then for books and subscriptions, to the extent that council's interested in a topic, certainly want to have an opportunity to have a modest book and subscription budget to help you serve your constituents. For City's Manager's Office, we had some significant reductions there. The City Manager is less expensive than was previously budgeted. And then also, we had a change on the Assistant to the City Manager that was previously in the office was reallocated to the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department. For City Clerk, Amy Van did a great job of looking at her budget and really focused in on the actuals and the projected costs and was able to achieve some cost savings there as we go forward. And then in addition to that, previously, there was a Management Analyst II position that supported the City Clerk, and when she refilled that, she went ahead and reclassified it and filled it with an administrative assistant position, which is a lower-cost position that still serves her needs. Just from our overall general fund budget overview, you saw a lot of ins and outs on positions. And you see a big focus on engineering when you saw those position changes, and that's really to kind of get at all the street repairs and all these CIP projects we have coming down the pike. Council knows more than anyone, the residents and businesses are looking forward to having some streets addressed, so we really put this budget together to set us up operationally to do that. But the ins and outs on all those positions, we're proposing to have an increase of half of a full-time employee across all those positions you changed, that you saw change. So we really tried to play with the hand that we have and really try to, you know, use those existing positions to kind of set us up for the future. The other thing that is new for this budget is funding for street maintenance and repairs. So the first time we're seeing general fund money going towards street repairs. It's not the only money. There's all the existing money that goes in that Regina will talk about relative to, you know, to gas tax and other fund sources, but these are general fund dollars that are projected $2 million for '23, '24, and then for '24, '25, $4 million, and that's projected thereafter in the long-range forecast. Also, as Councilmember Dr. Kropinski Costa mentioned at the outset during council comments, we have $4 million that's been awarded for the second phase of Auburn Boulevard. And so that, too, will be transferred to the Capital Improvement Program. And when we get to kind of the fund transfers, we'll kind of talk a little bit about how that works to make sure that that money's there when we need it. And I'll go and turn this back over to Tammy for a discussion on the ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act dollars.
So just a little reminder of how ARPA came about. So the money was intended to provide support to state and local governments in response to the COVID pandemic. The city received a total of $15,676, let's try that again, $15,676,972, which was received in two payments back in May of '21 and May of '22. Originally, this entire amount of money could only be used on four different categories, which was the response to public health emergency and its negative impacts, which included small business loans, helping nonprofits and households, to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID-19, provide premium pay to essential workers, and to invest in water, sewer, and/or broadband infrastructure. Luckily, in April of 2022, U.S. Treasury came back and offered a standard allowance of revenue loss of $10 million, which allowed recipients to be able to spend the money in more broader, you know, than before, it was very strict. So where we're at right now is we have the $10 million, but we're still have to stay within the four categories for the remainder of $5.6 million. So what the city did is for the last two fiscal years, we've used this money to unfreeze the police positions that we had to freeze. So that's considered rehiring of public safety to pre-pandemic levels. We use the money for small business grants, and we are using it, as Mayor Schaefer had mentioned, about implementing information technology, major projects, including the city's financial system. Keeping in mind, in this budget that we're proposing, is we're looking to use additional restricted monies for the police department for one more year for those frozen positions, although they're not frozen anymore. Keeping in mind that this does not increase the PD budget, there's no new positions, and that these funds will be offsetting the general fund.
And the other component we have is also offsetting the fleet replacement. So we have a transfer to fleet replacements, and this will allow us to build up on that reserve and utilize ARPA dollars as well. So I just want, oh, sorry.
Can I make a point of clarification, just for the audience's benefit, that all of this money must be committed by 2024 and spent by 2026? Though it's not as though we could just say, well, let's just stick this in savings. It has to be expended, has to be allocated by 2024 and spent by 2026, correct?
That's correct.
We can do that.
So just wanted to give a highlight on the transfers to funds that we have proposed. We have about, for both fiscal years, $210,000 for building maintenance and for capital building equipment replacements, about $350,000. Information technology for equipment and software, we have about $150,000. And once again, fleet replacement is $400,000. Here you can see, we talked about the transfer of the Auburn Boulevard project to a CIP fund, so that it's secured for that use of $4 million, and then funding for the first time of street repairs and maintenance of $2 million and $4 million in '24, '25.
So each year, we're required by California Revenue and Taxation Code, by the California Department of Finance, to calculate our appropriation limit. It's basically each local government must use their percentage change in population as of January 1, 2023, and come up and use the state's cost of living to come up with this appropriation. So what this is really saying is our general fund revenues, using the per capita cost for the state and the population change for the city, which for this year is a negative .17. Last year, it was a negative 1.01, so we're improving. So our general fund is well within the appropriation limit at 44.15%. Last year, we were at 43.85%, so it has not changed that much. And then with the other city funds, also known as non-general funds or special revenue funds, these include many of the CIP funds that Regina's going to be talking about shortly. As Chief Turkot had mentioned, this is where code enforcement in rental housing is, gas tax, drainage. And with that, Regina is going to speak about the CIP and how she's going to make the city better.
Good evening, Council. So the Capital Improvement Program is a tool that we use to kind of forecast not only revenues that we'll have coming in, but also to be able to plan for our long-term capital projects. State law does require that the CIP is produced annually, covers again a five-year planning horizon, and since we have transitioned to a two-year model for this first two years, or excuse me, for this first, for this first two years, we will have it identified as a two-year secured funding. So next year, when we update the CIP, we will likely only have the first year shown as secured funding, and then the four years after that will shown as just planning until it comes back to council for formal approval. The CIP does not allocate the funds, but again, it's used as a planning tool. And prior to inclusion, projects are reviewed for consistency with the city's general plan. It is also presented to Planning Commission for findings to be consistent with the general plan, in which that was addressed last night, at last night's Planning Commission. Next slide, please. So the five-year look ahead, we have 23 projects planned over the next five years, for a total of a little over $17 million for '23, '24, and $34.9 million for '24, '25. Approximately 30% or so for these first two years is secured by local funds, with the rest of it being grant dollars. So your staff have been hard at work securing grant funds. Next slide. The two-year funding plan has 31 different funding sources, so we'll be doing a lot of juggling across our programs and our capital projects. So I'm not going to go through every single project, but just to highlight some of our larger capital projects that we have for this next two years. We have our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, formerly known as the Electric Greenway, which is well underway. We're more than 50% done, and we expect to be concluded this fall. We'll construct the 2.9 miles of the multi-use trail, primarily utilizing the smud electric corridor easement. This project was a successful recipient of large ATP or Active Transportation Grant Funds, with other local support dollars through our stormwater transportation and per capita state grant. And this project was, is consistent with council's three-year strategic goal to maintain public infrastructure and enhance alternative modes of transportation. Excellent. So our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, this is the extension that we just received, again, another grant to support design, right-of-way, environmental, and construction. This will construct a half-mile segment between the existing Arcade Creek Preserve just off of Sayonara, and will extend to Mariposa. Again, an ATP grant for this one, we were able to leverage staff time, so instead of actually having to match dollars for now until, unless that project increases in cost, but we'll be able to leverage actual staff time against the grant. And this project also supports a three-year strategic goal as well. Our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two, we have received Caltrans authorization through our right-of-way certification, and we will be ready to advertise by this fall with the expectation of being under construction by this time next year. We have just received word that we are being for consideration at next week's SECOG Board Meeting for additional funds, and this will fund that final gap, which we thought we had addressed before, but as prices continue to increase, we found ourselves needing additional funding. So we'll be receiving over $8.1 million, excuse me, in additional grant funds. And to touch on what Councilmember Kropinski Costa mentioned earlier, we'll be receiving also a Smart Growth Incentive Program funding from Sacramento Transportation Authority, which will serve as matching dollars as well. So this fund, this project has multiple different funding sources, primarily from grant funds, but again, we will also be leveraging some local funds, some impact funds, and of course, our $4 million out of our general fund, and this does support our strategic goal as well. Old Auburn Complete Streets Phase One, this will continue on with the design and environmental and right-of-way. We still have not secured construction dollars. We anticipate that to be in the next cycle or two through SECOG or through state ATP. The goal of the project is to construct improvements through Old Auburn to address all modes of transportation. And again, this project also supports a strategic goal of council as well. Our Payment Restoration, this program has kind of changed in, over the last couple of years, as we've talked originally about addressing our low PCI, which we weren't really getting anywhere, and so our new strategic plan is to address our higher-traveled roadways, those locations that are not necessarily qualified for grant funds as larger complete streets, but we want to make sure that we're utilizing our funds wisely. So leveraging between our general fund dollars, our SB1 allocation, our Measure A, and our gas tax funds, we will be able to deliver much larger projects and be able to address a lot more miles of pavement, and this also supports council's strategic goal. Roseville Road-Butternut Drive Safety Improvements, this is also a new grant that our staff secured this recent H-SIP cycle. This project will construct improvements over at Roseville Road and Butternut Drive to allow for southbound left-turn movement safely into Butternut Drive, but because of this type of a program with H-SIP, we will also be including additional signalized intersections for the back plates around the traffic signals. So those are those yellow reflective tape that you see around the traffic signals to bring more attention to those signals for higher safety and visibility, and this supports a council strategic goal as well. And then lastly, our San Juan Complete Streets, Phases 1A and Phase 1B. Again, another project that we are being recommended for additional funding through SECOG in next week's Board Meeting. This project will construct improvements from Madison Avenue up to Spicer, and hopefully in the future, we will be coming back for a Phase Two, which will connect it all the way up to Greenback Lane. This is from two SECOG grants with additional funding through SB1, stormwater utility, and contributions from SAC RT for capital improvements and then TDA funds as well. And this also supports a council strategic goal. And that concludes the CIP.
Great. And I'll just go ahead and speak a moment about our long-range forecast. You can see that's up on the slide here. But basically, if you look back, we have the fiscal year '21, '22 on the left, and then fiscal year '22, '23, the original budget, as well as the January forecast that was presented previously to council. So if you look at that forecast, we had a beginning reserve balance of $11.6 million, our total revenues and our total operating expenditures, you could see there, and we ended up with a net operating position of just over $8 million. But we're projecting to end this fiscal year with an ending reserve balance of $19.6 million. And if you look down below there, we have the minimum reserve policy of City Council at 17%, so we're ending the year well in excess at that. There's a City Manager Target Reserve Policy that I recommend that we strive for, wouldn't say that it would be a minimum policy, but it's kind of a target goal, if you will, and that would put us at about $8.9 million for that target reserve, so you can see that we're in excess of that by about 10.7. So we'll begin next fiscal year with a $19.6 million projected beginning reserve balance as was presented in the budget for fiscal year '23 and '24, and then '24, '25. You can see the revenues there, and I just want to take a moment and speak to the revenues. We did have a meeting with our consultant. They're a consultant that's held in very high regard throughout the state, HDL, and we went ahead and went through all the revenue assumptions just within the last couple of weeks with them, all the way out through '27, '28. So we feel very confident that we're doing a pretty accurate representation of what projected revenues are relative to some of the, you know, some of the best forecasters in the state, all the way through '27 and '28. And then you can see on our operating expenditures, going back to '23, '24, what's proposed in the budget for both '23, '24, and '24, '25, if you want to push your cursor there. Okay, great. And you can see what our net operating position would be. If we go to '23, '24, this was talked about, that ARPA funding that has some restricted funds to it that Tammy talked about, that would actually offset, so that's the police-funded, continuing the funding of the police positions, but not an expansion of the police budget. positions, but not an expansion of the police budget, uh, and then coupled with that, there's four-hundred thousand dollars that, uh, go to Fleet Reserve, uh, but that would offset our operating expenditures in twenty-three and twenty-four. And then you can see below that, we have the street repairs that we talked about of general fund money, as well as the four million dollars for the Auburn Boulevard match. That, uh, total of six million dollars would be placed in a capital reserve fund, and this is something on like the, the two million dollars, for instance. That is probably not going to translate to blacktop in twenty-three, twenty-four. We will actually have, um, paving projects that are part of our regular paving, but this, what this does is it allows us to put money away, uh, in a fund, and then we're able to plan for some of these large projects that Regina Cave was talking about, um, and we know the money's there when we're ready to go out and execute on those projects, because those projects take time to scope, they take time to design, the bid out, and then they finally get into construction. So it's important that we place those back into a fund. But you can see, uh, we're projecting to have an ending reserve balance at twenty-three, twenty-four of, uh, about nineteen, uh, point eight million dollars, and then again, that would cycle back up to the following fiscal year, and so you can see the, how the model works, uh, throughout. Looking at the minimum reserve policy over the ten-year, uh, you can see that we're, we're meeting that, and we're actually also meeting and exceeding the target reserve policy, uh, in the, in the following years. So that's just a general overview of the financial forecast. I think we've got another slide that, if you want to see it in more of a chart form, uh, but you can see the, the pink line down below would be the minimum policy. If, if the blue bars were below that, we'd be concerned, uh, or if they were kind of right at the minimum policy, that would be something that we'd want to be, uh, you know, paying very close attention into and talking a lot about. But, uh, based upon where we're at relative to revenues and projected expenditures, uh, and as one of the things that Susan Towar mentioned too, is the growth that we are projecting in the twenty-three, twenty-four and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is still, uh, well below what we model relative to, um, growth and operating costs. So I, I think from a budgetary standpoint, the city's in good shape, as you can see demonstrated by our financial forecast here. Of course, we can never predict the future one-hundred percent, but that's one of the reasons why the twenty-five percent target reserve is, uh, a best practice. Uh, from a next step standpoint, um, tonight, uh, we're looking to get any feedback on the proposed budget, or if there's anybody that's watching at home or here in the audience, if you've seen something and you'd like for us to, uh, hear more about it, please go ahead and, um, contact our team and, uh, let us know your thoughts. Uh, and then we'd be looking to come back to City Council on May twenty-fifth for an actual adoption of the budget. So similarly, if the Council, um, you know, the other tonight or between now and the budget adoption has things on your mind, I'm sure we'll be talking about them. So tonight, one of the things that I should note is, these are draft numbers, and depending on some of the feedback we get, those may move around a little bit, uh, before we come back in for final budget adoption. But we would be looking to do that on May twenty-fifth, and then, uh, shortly thereafter, we'd be releasing the adopted budget book, uh, for the public on, on June eighth, and we expect to have some communications around the budget as well, specifically kind of talking about how it's really, um, a community-facing budget, consistent with a lot of the Council priorities that, uh, your Council's been working on, um, to address community needs. And, um, Susan and Tammy, I don't know if you had anything further to add?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments by Councilmembers? Portia?
Yes, um, well done, very well done. Um, you've managed to streamline the process here, were able to meet all the goals that we've set, you're meeting those strategic buckets. I know it was a hard push, you know, after our last strategic, strategic planning session, but from what we see here, it's doable, and we're actually able to meet our reserve budget also, and you guys support it. So thank you so much for your hard work and taking the time to put it together, and for this great presentation.
Vice Mayor, have a comment?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So I just wanted to, uh, to really, um, thank our, um, our executive team for really working hard on this, and a special appreciation to Casey Campanar. Um, it's tough to give up positions, um, when, when they're allocated to you, but in the look of the big picture, I can't tell you, Casey, how much I appreciate, uh, your being a team player in this, in this program.
All right, Dr. Jana?
That's it.
Uh, thank you. Vice Mayor, Acting Mayor? Um, we will have our strategic plan next week. We may, wouldn't we want to have to at some point adjust something in there based on discussions that we're going to have, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we're having a, with the City Council, we're having a strategic planning retreat, and certainly as part of that, if, if some things come up...
Something might come up, you know?
Yeah, something, absolutely. I mean, these numbers are presentation of, uh, the draft budget as proposed today. Uh, I'm sure, I have no doubt there'll be some ins and outs by the time we get to May twenty-fifth, so.
All right. I want to say that it is nice to see a, a reserve again, you know, it's like we didn't have since Henry was here, so it's as good, and, and it's like, I wish, we could have asked questions, though, along the way, because now it's just overwhelming. But I do have one question that I remember having. Uh, losing a code enforcement officer, it was my understanding that we were trying to hire more, because we just didn't have enough to handle all the complaints that were coming in, uh, from the residents, and I'm just wondering why we could lose one when we thought we needed more.
Well, I think I'm going to hand that to Chief Alex Turcot.
There's, uh, never enough people to do the work, but we do have to figure out where we can best utilize the positions that we have. So that particular spot has been frozen for the last three years. It was not...
How many do we have? How many code enforcement officers?
We have five.
Oh, we have five?
Yeah, we have five. So, um, it's split between...
We used to have two.
Right. It's split between pure code enforcement, and then the rental housing program provides for additional positions. So, um, at the end of the, the hiring rainbow, if you will, there'll be four code enforcement officers plus a senior code that asks, uh, acts as a lead. So when we did an analysis on where to best...
That was a vacant position that you just can eliminate?
It was a vacant position where we've been able to streamline some other processes in code enforcement, where they've been able to, you know, continue with the workload without it, and we could always use more, but dispatch was where the crucial need was, because they were fundamentally at full staff in dispatch. They were really at what industry standards would consider critical emergency staffing.
And why did animal control budget go down? Why is it going down? We found better ways?
That mostly reflects the fact that we have a...
Better control?
Very, very good, um, halftime animal control officer filling a full-time position. So while we kept that FTE there, um, Alexis Wager's our halftime, um, person, she's a very, uh, well-tenured animal control officer that we were able to snag from another agency, and she's doing a great job in there, and she has a young family, she might come back at some point in the future to full-time, but for now, she's doing a great job in a halftime spot.
If you're happy with your budget, I'm happy for you, because the police budget to me is the most important thing in here.
Well, happiness wasn't a factor that I remember considering. Um, if we could rework that, maybe at the strategic plan, we'll have another idea. No, it's very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, let me just check here. Another thing I would have liked, if it's, you know how at the beginning of, uh, the thing, you showed all the, uh, in revenue sources? For the capital projects, it would be neat to see what we're getting from STA, CACOG, SB one. It'd just be, you know, you, you said something in one of your updates to us that Amy Vera gave us four million for something? Is that in there?
That's not included in this budget, because it's, uh, check hasn't arrived yet, but we have a, a congressional appropriation that is in the proposed budget, and, uh, it's the...
For Auburn Boulevard?
Yeah, but we have one million dollars for what they call...
For the Sayonara properties?
Well, yeah, so the four million dollars is actually would be going to Habitat for Humanity, but it's something that we're supportive and excited about, because...
Oh, so we don't get that, they do?
But it fulfills an obligation that we otherwise would have.
But we do have partial obligation, so it doesn't fill any of ours?
It, with, they're fulfilling our obligation. So our memorandum of agreement, the agreement that we have with them, um, they are contracting with us to fulfill an obligation of the city, and so they are building it there, the vehicle by which we're fulfilling that obligation. If they weren't here, um, we may have to have a build day...
But we were going to pitch in some ARPA money for that, right? We were contributing some ARPA dollars for the building of those homes?
It wasn't ARPA dollars, but we had other fund sources that were going towards that.
Okay, some housing money?
Right.
And we no longer are going to use the har, housing money, we're going to take the other four million? Or is this on top of that?
No, this is, this is, there was already a funding gap that they were facing, so they were out pursuing grants on their own, but this helps them get there.
Yeah.
Uh, and then in addition to that, we had a million dollars, um, for the intelligent transportation enhancements that really help us at some, uh...
Okay.
Uh, intersections that we have some challenges with right now.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you.
As the most junior member of the Council, I really appreciate you all spoke in English to us. Um, it was really easy to follow. I, I can sense the camaraderie and everyone coming together on something that could be very, very difficult, and, um, I just really appreciate that everyone, um, shared the pain and the work, so thank you.
And can you pull up, uh, page six again? Slide six. It's, uh, six on my paper. It's the one with the pennies.
Oh, penny.
Penny slide.
Oh, sure. Understood.
Yeah, there it is. So, uh, you know, we pointed it out, but I'm, I just want to point it out more. You know, I, I wish people understood this, you know, and now you took it away again. Um, I wish people understood this about how government works and how funding works, and, and, you know, when you buy something, you pay yourselves tax and how it works. Um, a penny, we get a penny of that, and you can see the state gets six cents of it. And, and what do you get for it? And we're trying to do all this stuff with that penny, and you wonder like, what's the state doing with those six pennies? And so when you make your decisions, keep that in your mind. What, what, what are your state people, what are your state legislators, what, what's going on with the six pennies? Because we're working our butts off here with the one penny. Imagine if we had just even two pennies? I mean, it'd be, it'd be incredible. I mean, it really would, it would change the city dynamic incredibly. But instead, we have to send six pennies over to the state and, and scratch our head and wonder like, what did we get for it? So that's my rant on that. Um, uh, I really want to thank, uh, the city manager, the staff members, uh, for an incredible report. Um, it, it just keeps getting better and better, is the way I'm going to put it, you know, in the span of like a hiccup, literally, a hiccup. It seems like we went from doom and gloom, and, oh my God, we need to raise sales tax, and, you know, we need more money, and what are we going to do, to these numbers that you see today, which are just absolutely incredible. And also, they include funding for the first time ever from the general fund to work on our streets, too, and I wish people understood that, too. So, um, things are going great. This is a vibrant city. We couldn't have this report if this wasn't a vibrant city. So those doomsdayers that, uh, you know, like to, to talk about, uh, you know, how bad we're doing, um, I shouldn't say things like this, but feel free to move. But, um, we're doing great, Citrus Heights is doing great, the city manager's great, the staff is great, the peace, police department's great, the city council's okay, I guess, but, um, everything is really going good in this city, and I, I just couldn't be more happy to, to have this kind of report come back, and I really want to thank you guys, really, really deeply thank you. Okay, this is a review and discuss. Anything else? If nothing, we'll go to the next item.
Um, I just wanted to check to see if there was any public comment. I haven't received any speaker cards for that item.
You're going to know before I know. If there's anybody that would love to talk about this, uh, beautiful report, feel free to come running up. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item.
The next item is regular calendar, item number twelve. The subject is resolution authorizing the city manager to, uh, execute an agreement with Townsend Public Affairs, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Townsend Public Affairs, not to exceed sixty-thousand dollars for the creation of a comprehensive grant strategy and implementation support Good evening, Mayor Schaefer and members of City Council. I am Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. We'll get the presentation pulled up here, but, uh, this is a fitting evening to consider this agenda item. You just heard how the City of Citrus Heights effectively uses a penny, and this is about finding even more pennies. So consideration of implementation of a comprehensive grant strategy. This has been represented over the course of about a year of strategic planning objectives. It began in May of twenty-twenty-two, when we set an intention to create a comprehensive grants action plan, and then in the next round of strategic planning, we set an objective, uh, Council set an objective to select a consultant to begin creation of a comprehensive grant strategy. And in November of twenty-twenty-two, Council approved issuance of a request for proposals to find said consultant, and staff began the process of finding the most qualified consultant in January and February of this year. Uh, so I want to pause for a second. I know the staff report was extensive and, and, uh, walked at length through the process that we went and what we were looking for. For purposes of general education, um, what you see on the screen is what a comprehensive grant strategy means for Citrus Heights. As staff sat down and said, how do we design a program, design a system that will help us achieve an increased volume of grants? These were the priorities that we outlined in the request for proposals. So what a comprehensive grant strategy will be for Citrus Heights, uh, first and foremost, is an inventory and prioritization of existing and planned city projects. You heard from Director Cave, General Services, all of the capital improvement projects that we have. That is one slice of all of the projects and priorities underneath our city organization umbrella. So what this document will start with is an inventory and prioritization of all of that subject matter, and then we will create a comprehensive grant strategy that will be a living document of extensively researched grants that match those city priorities and projects. It'll also involve the development of a grants-tracking tool to make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned and no grant unsubmitted. It's a priority for us that, uh, we're able to present Council, Council success metrics and tell the story of, uh, what this initiative will be able to produce. Uh, it also will involve a review of existing city policies and plans to make sure we can effectively meet requirements of grants that we're targeting. And finally, what we're really looking for, um, because, uh, we have a really lean, scrappy team that does a lot here at City Hall, we're looking for supplemental staff support to be able to meet that increased goal for increased volume of submissions. So, um, the benefits of implementation of a comprehensive grant strategy are fourfold. First, as I mentioned, it'll allow us to pursue an increased volume of grants, and it creates the necessary staff, uh, support to be able to do so, and it'll also ensure that we have comprehensive tracking and reporting. Because we are a lean team doing a lot of things, uh, grants are submitted and completed on, as an ad hoc basis, um, which can frankly be a little bit of a fire drill. So we're looking forward to building increased staff support and tracking, uh, all of those goals that we're setting. And overall, this will help advance city priorities and projects, find those additional pennies to be able to make stuff happen, uh, which will allow us to maximize and leverage our local funding, will be diversifying revenue stream, and I think it's also important to note that, um, this is an emerging trend best practice for municipalities. As we're looking to stretch our dollars more and more, uh, supplemental funding does become even more important to be able to meet our community goals and priorities. Uh, so, uh, as outlined in the staff report, we went through a pretty extensive RFP creation, review, and interview process to find the consultant that's a best match for our organization, and the staff recommendation after completing that process is Townsend Public Affairs. And, uh, we find them to be the best consultant for this initiative, um, for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, they're an all-inclusive service that offers the widest and deepest variety of expertise that matches City of Citrus Heights' goals and priority projects and initiatives. Um, they've also have a really great system, um, that will provide staff support, including monthly updates, assisting us, uh, building a longer runway to be able to meet that increased volume of grant submissions. Uh, they're also really skilled and offer advocacy, uh, both pre and post-submission, so it's a really... really skilled and offer advocacy both pre and post submission. So, it's a really holistic approach to grant submission and post-application review so that we can do, for lack of a better word, post-mortem and make sure that we have continuous improvement for our submissions. And I want to take a moment. Representatives from the Townsend team are here tonight. So, if it's okay, I'd like to bring them up for a quick introduction and a warm hello. Joining us is Vice President Casey Elliott and Grants Manager Alex Gibbs.
Good evening. Casey Elliott, Vice President with Townsend Public Affairs. Very excited to be here. As Megan said, we're very excited. We have a strong track record. Our company's been founded and around for 25 years, providing state, federal advocacy, as well as grant-writing services to local public agencies. So, cities like Citrus Heights are our bread and butter. We have offices here locally in Sacramento. Alex and I are both local. Actually, my mother-in-law lives in town, so very, very close. Very excited to be here in front of you. But through that, through the way we're developed, we can be on the ground in Washington DC, working with granting agencies here in Sacramento locally, and then leverage all of those relationships with funding agencies, leverage your legislators, leverage your congressional delegation. Again, to put the projects that you have here, which you have a lot of great projects, you have been very successful, and we're just want to be working with the team to kind of give you that extra boost, make sure, again, that there's no stones left unturned, and really that the city is able to put forth the best quality projects that match what the needs are of the community. So, again, we're very excited to be here, happy to answer any questions. Alex Gibbs, our Grants Manager, is the day-to-day expert on many of the programs that have been discussed today, as well as many others at the state and federal level.
Questions?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you. And for some reason, I know your company and I'm just trying to place it, you know, but over the years, your names come up. So, but one of my questions was, for all the cities that you represent, and it was extensive numbers, how do you prevent yourselves from having a conflict of interest of having two cities applying for the same pot of money?
Sure. Great question. I think one of the things that's really important in the grant world is ultimately, we are as successful as the projects that our cities have. So, oftentimes, we're working with cities to take the projects that are already in development. How can we massage those? How can we make them better? In some instances, where are we not going to be competitive? Where should we refocus other resources to be more successful? There's always, at the state and federal level, over the last 20 years, there's always more demand than there are dollars. So, that's difficult to get away from. But really, what we do is we work with all of our clients to try to put their projects in the best position. Locally here, we don't have other overlapping clients. That's something that we look at when we, you know, when we originally applied for this. We wouldn't want to-
You don't have a lot up here in the Sacramento area?
We work, for example, like with SACRT, the grant that you mentioned earlier, we wrote that grant. So, we have some work here, primarily with SACRT, but nothing with other competing cities in the jurisdiction. Obviously, other places throughout the state and the Bay Area, we do. But ultimately, again, we try to focus every one of our clients so that every project is put in the best light and given the best chance to succeed. Ultimately, the way we view it is, while there may be oversubscription of certain grant programs, we'd love to get all the money for all of our clients. And so, in that sense, we aren't oversubscribed. We aren't putting in more requests for grants for our clients than we know there's dollars for.
Mr. Mayor, any questions for the Townsend folks?
We go-
Tim, are you there?
Mayor, if you could just unmute your microphone.
Yes. Great presentation. Thank you so much. No question.
Okay. And the only thing I would say is I'm going to need mom's phone number, so I'm keeping the pressure on, okay?
I can definitely do that. Thank you.
All right. And then, any other questions or comments for staff presentation? Go ahead, Jane.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on return on investment. I think, I think by the time we win our first grant through this relationship, it will more than pay for this particular contract. So, thank you for sticking through this process. I really appreciate having a really focused activity here because we were good on our own. It sounds like we're going to get really good with a partner. Thank you.
I think we're getting the best bang for the buck. When you compare all of the responses that you got, some of them wanted more and gave less. And I think what they offer with the monthly meetings with you guys and the constant, you know, working on it, I think that's good. I'm really, really, really glad you found this group.
And my comments will be, this kind of came up during cap to cap. As we talked to staff members, that, you know, they really kind of emphasized, you really need to have the right information. We really need to see the right words and all that kind of stuff. So, this is spending money to make money. And for the naysayers out there, if you don't get it, I don't know what to tell you. But this seems to be a good thing and it seems like we should do this definitely.
There's a whole knack to writing grants. I mean, it's like people that you'd have to have staff, full-time staff person here if you didn't have-
There literally are trigger words. You got to write, you got to have the right words in your grant.
And it would have cost more to have an in-house person and pay their pirs and all that.
Amy, any signups, anything?
I don't have any public comment cards.
I'm not seeing anybody running up to comment. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move approval.
It's been moved by Portia for the staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Jana.
Second?
You're too late, Tim. Come on now.
That's all right.
It's three hours ahead for him.
Any other comments or questions about the motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is department reports and there are none. The next item is city manager items.
All right. Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I do have a few brief updates to share with you. If we can go to the next slide. One that I wanted to really kind of highlight is we've been having some enhanced collaboration with our impact team at the Police Department and our beautification crew that's part of our General Services Department. So, the beautification crew's been up and running since really kind of the beginning of this year and has done a lot of great work and has been coordinating with PD. But we're really kind of stepping that up and continuing to refine and optimize their collaboration. And so, and ultimately too, there's also kind of pulling in the navigator, who's an important part of our, if you call it like a three-legged stool, if you will, to kind of address some of the issues that we're having with our unhoused population. Because one, with the navigator services, we want to make sure that we're trying to get people into the services they need and ideally getting people off the streets. And then certainly, we want to make sure that we have a clean environment for residents and businesses and also address public safety issues. So, kudos to the team that have all been involved with it. Appreciate all your good work. But they've been, basically, some of the things they've been doing is kind of a daily assessment of our problem areas and then coordinating schedules to make sure that they're meeting out there together to address items of concern. Our navigator information is being provided as well to contacts that are made. And then, when we have a dangerous situation that's being dealt with in the appropriate ways. And then, there's also been through these contacts where somebody's really sick and, you know, has a bad infection, they've been able to get the medical provision. So, there's been a lot of benefit through this increased collaboration and then the cleanup too. The community appreciates seeing that. So, wanted to just kind of highlight and thank the team for that and make sure that the council and the community is aware of that increased collaboration that you may be seeing throughout the community. Here's a couple little before and after pictures at Crosswoods Community Park and Sylvan Oaks Library of some recent activities there. And, you know, we had done a big effort with Caltrans to clean up iadie and antelope. And we did recently have some activity pop up there. You can see there's some debris. And one of the things that we've talked about is a piece of litter attracts another piece of litter. So, getting on that quick, it's amazing how quickly something can get out of hand. So, appreciate the team immediately addressing that issue that's come up. And then, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the public work showcase that Director Regina Cave talked about earlier. This is a great event. I know some of our council members were out there last year. A lot of fun. And it feels great to see kids as well as adults in the community that are able to connect up with some vocational pathways that they may or may not be aware of. But we had a number of vendors that actually tabled it. And, you know, people were actually doing some real-time applications and learning more about job opportunities. So, it's truly a great education and career fair. And it's fun, too. I mean, I think last year there was snow cones and some popcorn and some good times had by all. So-
And a strategic thing will end so that we can get over to this at 3:00?
We'll have some motivation after the retreat to all walk over to the public work showcase. And I think we might need to hide the keys to some of the equipment, though, so we don't have too much fun out there. But there will be quite a bit of equipment that is onsite as well for people to come and experience and learn more about. But really encourage the community to come out for that. We will also have kind of a bike corral that's being provided by Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. And it's at Van Maron Park. Just a great experience. Again, that's 3:00 to 6:00 on Thursday, May 18th. Who doesn't love this picture? But basically, one of the things that we're going to have is we're going to have some Mighty Munchers that are going to be coming to City of Citrus Heights. So, we're going to be using goats and sheep between the weeks of May 22nd and June 2nd at the old Sylvan Middle School site, as well as the Twin Oaks Crest Moss Oak Open Space. And it's great because these goats and sheep are able to do a lot of the weed control that we'd otherwise have to use manpower and equipment for. And it's less noisy, it's better for the environment, and people like to see them. So, if you're wondering why you're seeing a bunch of sheep and goats around, it's helping with our weed abatement. So, I wanted to give a heads up to the council and the community that that's going to be occurring. And that concludes my updates.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Jane?
I have one and I don't exactly know how to word it, but I would like to revisit the park naming on Greenback Lane. And I got a strong suggestion, and I think it's such a wonderful idea to name that park Miller Park in honor of Steve Miller. So, I would like that added to a future agenda.
Yeah, I think we're working on bringing that back as some sort of-
We're supposed to have a naming ordinance.
Ordinance or something like that, I think is what we decided on a few meetings back.
Remember, we voted to have a naming ordinance and then after that, we'd go to a flash vote. We talked about it once at a meeting.
Okay. Okay. So, that's in the works, definitely. She need a second on that or we're in the works on that, right?
Just to clarify, Councilmember Lopez Taft, were you specifically looking for to be named, you know, come back with that specific task of-
Yes, correct.
-Councilmember Miller's name or come back generally for naming of the park?
It's for the specific name.
Okay. Is there a second on that? I'm going to hold off just because, again, we're coming back with this ordinance, this process. And so, I think we still have time to reconsider that.
We'll definitely have a wide variety of options spoken to as part of that process and that will be definitely coming back. Okay.
Fair enough.
All right. Anybody else? Portia, anything? Jane?
Yes.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
I have something.
Hold on, sir. Hold on.
All right.
Jana, anything?
Uh-uh.
Okay. And then, for me, I would, again, apologize for missing the last meeting. That meeting resulted in a 2:02 vote on the feasibility study for Citrus Heights School District Committee Formation. And I would like to bring that back for reconsideration.
And I'd like to second that.
And this is for the work plan of the committee?
Yeah, just the same exact, basically, item as the previous council meeting. Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, you have something?
Nope, that was it.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody else? Anything? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned.